Good evening. I'll call the July 11th, 2022 Davie County Commissioners Meeting to a order. I'll ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Father, we come here tonight, Lord, thanking you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. Father, we just celebrated the birth of this great nation that you sovereignly placed us in. Father, we thank you for men and women who have bled and died and given the ultimate sacrifice on battlefields that we might be truly free. Lord, tonight, we pray for those in our community that serve us, in law enforcement, in our fire departments, our EMS, those that educate our children. We thank you for the effort and the commitment and the faithfulness they give to make this an outstanding community, to raise a family, and to live. So, Lord, tonight, we pray for wisdom, we pray for discernment, that can only come from you, Father, as we do the business of this great county. Bless those that are here tonight. Give us calmness of speech. And, Father, let our spirit be your spirit. May our words be your words. And, Lord, we will give you praise, glory, and honor for it. We pray this prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to ethics and conflicts disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics that was adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before the board for a vote at this meeting tonight. If so, please speak up and let the board know before the agenda is adopted. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll look at the agenda. I'm going to make one change here. I'm going to remove the library board trustee appointment. Other than that, the agenda will roll as is. Do I have a motion to approve?
Same.
A motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion to have a second. All in favor? I think you. All right. Next, we'll go to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have tonight 10 people that have actually, not 10 now, because some of them struck their names out. Seven people who signed up. I'll go over the public comment guidelines, rules, before we get started. Each person is desiring a speech during the public comment. We'll sign up, and we've provided the signup sheet, and I've got your names. Each speaker shall be allowed a total of three minutes of speech, and so immediately stop when his or her three minutes are up. I will be keeping time. I will let you know when there's two minutes remaining, one minute remaining, 30 seconds remaining, and then what time to stop. If you're a speaker speaking for an organized group, you're allowed a total of five minutes. Again, I will let you know when there's two minutes remaining, one minute, 30 seconds, and when to stop. I have been designated by the board to be the timekeeper in this matter, so you'll need to look over this way every so often, just see what time you still have left. Speakers shall address the board as a whole and shall not ask any verbal exchanges back and forth between the board. All comments shall be verbal form. You're not allowed to play any recordings or video devices during the comment section. All comments by the speaker shall be limited to subjects that are within jurisdiction Davie County Board of County Commissioners or pertain to matters upon which it may act. Topics which are required that the board hold in closed session, including but not limited matters involving attorney-client privilege, anticipation, or pending litigation, personnel matters, property acquisition, and matters which are made confidential by law are not required to be topics for discussion at public comments. Speaker will make all presentations from a podium and shall not be allowed to physically approach the board. There's a total of 30 minutes allowed for public comments at each county commissioners' meeting. Upon a motion due than made, the board may extend the 30 minutes. If time runs out before all persons who have signed up to speak have an opportunity to do so, then those names will be carried over to the next board meeting. So with that said, I will be calling out some names. You will come to the podium. If you would, state your name for the clerk over here, so she can have that recorded, and then go ahead and start speaking. First, we have, okay, first, we have is Catherine Dillinger on the dog ordinance.
My name is Kathleen Derringer. Shall I start?
Yes.
I'm a single mom that moved to North Carolina in 2015 and to Davie County in 2018 in order to create a good life and future for my then-10-year-old son. With money I've worked hard for since age 12, I purchased almost seven acres of raw land and built a home in a horse barn. Davie County seemed to be a good place to do so. I also wanted to move somewhere I'd be welcome, have good neighbors, but mostly where my son and I would feel safe. Never did I expect the years of issues I was to have with neighbor dogs. From defecating on my property to growling at me as I tried to go to my mailbox, to having them block the street in front to oncoming cars, to chasing them off my porch even at 4:00 a.m. in the morning, to the constant barking around the clock, and more. I would even have drivers coming onto my property to yell at me because they assumed the dogs in the street were mine. They even started chasing my horses, to which I finally had to call animal control. Prior, my numerous kind attempts to address this with the neighbors would be met with statements such as, "There is no leash law in Davie County." "Well, if the dogs get hit by a car, it will teach our kids a lesson for keeping the gate open." Or, "If it gets so bad, just shoot at them next time." My calls to animal control were not welcome, as I was also reminded by them that there is no leash law. For six months, I was just told to keep taking pictures and to keep calling them. It was an awful experience, as each call was met with such disregard and even disdain for even me raising an issue about it. They eventually did take the neighbors to court to deem the dogs a nuisance. I had hoped that this would finally stop the issues. On September 10th of last year, the last thing I remember while riding my horse was these same dogs angrily barking and running my fence line next to my former riding arena that I've spent thousands of dollars now to move closer to my house. This was right before I fell and broke my neck, 10 ribs, collapsed my lung, and had a concussion and a brain bleed. I ended up being in the hospital for weeks with a recovery that is still not complete. I recently called animal control again, as once more these same dogs have started getting out weekly. Please, commissioners, put a leash law in place. Establish an ordinance to control loose dogs and constantly barking dogs. It should never have had to come to this. My dream home has not turned out that way, though my property has truly raised the property values in Davie County, and both my son and I have added to the economy and have been hard-working, good citizens here. It is time for change. Davie County is growing, and with more families desiring to move here, please make it a safe and enjoyable county for us all.
Rodney Miller, Advance Fire.
Rodney Miller, Advance Fire Department. Thank you all for having me. I've just got a quick question for you. I have asked several times since February concerning the funding, and the board asked me to come tonight just to kind of clarify something. We have been footing the utilities for the Station 2, 12-2 now, since February. Haven't received any funds. And I understand it goes back and forth. What I thought was approved is going back and forth. I'm not asking for a lease, or the department's not asking for the lease agreement. We know that's coming. We're working on that with y'all now. That's okay. I'm just kind of understand, I just want to understand where the funding's at for the utilities that has not been paid. And I know I've been in touch with Ruff and been in touch with some of y'all. I'm just kind of, I'm at a point where we need to close out of your budget, just like y'all do, and I'm kind of, I'm missing some funding that needs to come in. So, I don't know if any of you have any information that can help me. I appreciate it, you know, I'll be more than glad to take that after a while, but I just want that up. Second thing, one quick thing, guys, we've got to do something with EMS and the public safety sector in this county. It's bad. And when I say bad, it's getting worse. I don't know whether y'all are seeing it and you're just overlooking it. I promise you now, you're going to hear some more tonight, but it's getting to the point where some decisions have got to be made by somebody. I know we're waiting on you, I know we're waiting on your manager to kick in, but I don't know that your problems are going to hold up for that. We've got things that, the guys want to talk to us now out in the field. Nobody wants to talk to nobody. Everybody's scared to death with all these allegations going on. And I don't know where we're at on it. We've got to do something, okay? And I know that y'all do your best for it. I hope you do, anyway. And I appreciate y'all you do for us, okay? That's all I've got.
Next is Brad, is it Freezen? Freezen, that's right.
Good evening. I'm Brad Freezen. I'm an attorney at Bell Davis &amp; Pitt. I sent you all a letter in June about the Farmington meat processing zoning matter. And from that, you know, I represent George and Sharon Marthaness who live at 172 Stay Away. George is here, and I think he's maybe next on the signup. At the public hearing last month, George and Sharon addressed you during the, for that matter, and spoke about how the impact of rezoning that tract-to-neighborhood business would have on them. And they talked about how the access to the subject property is limited to a narrow, unpaved private easement. Those were points in my letter. I've had a chance to talk with Mr. Vogler about that. I'm not going to reiterate all that tonight, but I do have two thoughts in addition to what I've said before. First, if the zoning is approved, and the Longs invest a bunch of money in developing that property further, and then two years later, the Court of Appeals reverses that decision, that would leave them in a jam. And so tonight, there's an opportunity to not go down that road. They have a good, good plan. They need a good location. And then, second, y'all love Davie County. That's why you're sitting in those seats. But I imagine also a reason you ran for office is because you care about good government and making just decisions. And in fact, the oath of office you each took when you took your seats includes protecting and defending the Constitution and laws of the United States and of North Carolina. And sometimes doing that means you have to make an unpopular decision. Sometimes the good decision or the, the good government decision is unpopular. And I think that particular zoning matter may be one of those things, where the popular decision is in conflict with the laws. And so I just would urge you to remember your oaths, and I really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Next is George Matheson.
Marthaness, that's close enough.
My name is George Marthaness. I live at 172 Stay Away in Moxville. Our home is off of Farmington Road, on a private road. I'm here today to oppose the zoning map amendment at Agenda Item Number Nine. I hope when you vote on this zoning map amendment that you consider what the impact is of approving it on the residents of this residential neighborhood. We live on a private road. That is the only access, the only access, to the Farmington Meat Store. Proving this amendment will make this private road a public road and have substantial impact on the value of our residential homes in this neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Next to sign up is Henry Walker.
Henry Walker, a lifetime farmer at Davie County. I wasn't here a lot this month, but when I read the article in the paper, and that's what I got to go by, it really upset me. I was on the planning board when the agribusiness ordinance was written. It was the first in the state we had nothing to go by. And we worked on it, it was either 12 or 13 months. And I see in reading that newspaper, there's some mistakes in it. We need to go back and get a group of farmers. The planning board is good people, but they're not qualified. Farming is so complex that we need to farm, we need to get a group. I had took it outside of the planning board before. I'm the one that got it done. We formed a committee, and we worked on it and tried to get it right as we could, but I'm seeing mistakes in it. It hasn't been revisited in 15 years, to my knowledge. And we need to do it. It's important, and some of the things that are coming up, the way the wording is, was not our intention. It's not what we discussed, but the wording is changing, and it needs to be redone. Also, there's a lot of us farmers, they talk about selling products from other farms. That's something those farmers, I mean, I've done it. I buy cattle sometimes, finish a truck trailer load. I used to be an escrow seed dealer. The seed come out of Missouri. I mean, you can just, example, the lot of the winers, this ordinance come up on campus. The winers were starting, and we had like Don Brown's hydrophonic, there's a few things, and now it's changed. The dairies is gone, the vikers gone, there's so many changes. We need to go back and redo this. There are some other options. And one, I feel like if the county votes against them, they'd have a strong liability or discrimination lawsuit against the county. But they have some other options by the North Carolina General Statutes that I want to make the county aware of. Other than North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 54, Subchapter 4, and Subchapter 5, it's dealing with cooperative association for farmers. There's two types. There's a cooperative association and a marketing association that farmers can form. The cooperative association has to have a minimum of five farmers. And I'm going to kind of, I'm not going to go over, and I've got a copy of it from Mr. Vogler, if he'd like to research it. But it's agriculture organizations formed under Subchapter 4 are required to have its members to be producers, and it doesn't say "of," it says "are" agriculture products. So that would include any agriculture products on that one. The other is a marketing association. It only has to have three members to form it. And it's just, they have to be engaged in production of agriculture products. And both these cooperatives can sell outside of the members. They don't have to be a member. They can sell products to other farmers, handle them, as long as the gross from the others does not exceed the gross of theirs. So I just wanted to make the county aware, we need to make some changes. I'd be glad to serve on that committee again and help get a group of farmers. And I know some of them say that's fox watching the hen house, but farmers have a tendency to be honest in dealing with stuff like this. And it needs to be done. And if somebody, I don't know who it's going to be, the new planning director, but we need to get this done. It's just, there's going to be more issues come up, and I'd just like to see it done. And they talk about private drive. It's really a public drive. That's where all these county roads got started. And every time they pull out of their drive, the ones like Mr. Pondrick's building, anytime happens on far, Rockaway School, anything, people lining up fussing about traffic, but it houses. It's no different. They all come by, I've got Interstate 40 on one, and Little Gobby Road has over 100 vehicles a day, and sometimes we have 70 or 80 trips a day on the hall and side of this stuff. But thank you for the time, thank you for what you do.
Next, we have Mark Hager on solar farms.
Mark Hager with Forks City Act and Davie County History Museum. And thank you for your time, and as we already heard, and most of you already know, and I've spoken to several of them about our farming dilemmas that we're having. And for tonight, the one item that you have on the solar moratorium, that is something I know that many parties have been working really hard trying to go through and understand, understand that. But in working with the North Carolina Agricultural Committee on, on the legislative team and with Troxler's Office, one of the things that we have run into is that the, the cost inputs that are now taking place in farming has grown much farther than even when we anticipated the first part of the solar farm. Because Orion, it's gone with the Junction project and such. But in speaking for us and other farmers looking at it, I would invite you all to go back and look at the moratorium to be competitive and for farmers to find that little bit of revenue to hold them out. You're restricting them so far in terms of solar farming that you're only going to have an option of, we've lost our last dairy farm in this county, so farmers looking for other inputs, this is one that many counties across this state that I've talked with and across this nation are going, going to. I would, I would ask that you would go back and especially look at, in the sections on the setbacks are far too restrictive. Reduce those somewhat and increase the amount of acreage that panels can be on from 100 acres closer to 200 acres, or they're not going to be competitive enough to even be able to have anyone to look at them. And those solar leases, I know with us, with the museum, we were looking at as our nonprofit status, as taking revenue from it, and with the farmers that I've spoken to in Davie County using it to help them, at least for the next year or two until some sort of madness can be taken care of. And so the moratorium is fine, and it's needed. But to revisit some of the restrictions and reduce them somewhat, that's all we're asking. But I appreciate the time and thank you very much.
Mark Hancock on EMS.
Mark Hancock, appreciate the opportunity to address the board. I've got a big concern about the EMS system in this county. Y'all know my past, you know my history. I put my heart and soul in that place for 32 and a half years. I was the director when I retired. It was a well-oiled machine. What has happened? The thing has jumped track. It is this, it is a mess. Y'all know the problem. I don't. I don't work there. I'm not internal. But I know I have had people come to me, employees, and come to me and visit me and sit and cry like little babies because of the way they're being bullied, intimidated, a hostile work environment. It's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. If you do not address the problem, or problems, you may be seeing the little man in the black robes in the courthouse, or the State Office of EMS may be here knocking on your door wanting to do an investigation. I'm telling you, it is a service. What has been failed is the citizens and the taxpayers of this county. That is a delivery system for pre-hospital professional care for the sick and injured. I don't think it's quite there. It can get there, but you're going to have to have a lot of help. Lot of the people's been dragged through the mud, employees that are there now, and employees that have retired. The SBI was called in. It will be interesting to find out what that's about. I bet you it'll be unfounded. I ask you to please, to please, I'm coming to you as a taxpayer. I pay my fair share of taxes. I run a business. James, you, your dad handed you a business. You took that business with compassion and heart, and you growed it, and look what you've got now, with good employees and dedicated leadership. Kerry, you're a businessman. Richard, you're a businessman. Mark, y'all know, you know firsthand what EMS is about. I think it's safe to say that EMS give you a better quality of life. So y'all need to think about this. So if you're sick, injured, laying in the ditch, wrapped around a telephone pole, are you going to have somebody competent come to get you that knows what's going on? And here's the thing, please fix the problem. I know it's probably complex, but you can do it. I've got faith in you. So please do it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's the last individual who's signed up.
All right, next we'll move to our public hearings. First one's a zoning text amendment 2022-01, the solar facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before we deny the zoning map amendment 2022-01, the purpose of which is to consider changes to the requirements for solar energy generating facilities, specifically Sections 155.130, 29, Conditions for Solar Energy Facilities, and 155.151, Special Purpose District. At your direction, the planning board began reviewing the requirements for solar farms at the beginning of 2021. The planning board received public comment on the existing solar regulations and formed a subcommittee for deeper review and to provide regular updates. In December 2021, the planning board made a unanimous recommendation of proposed changes for the solar regulations. I, I would be happy to, to go over some of the, the highlights of it if you, if you wish. I know you've had quite a bit of time to look over this. We've kind of talked about it for many months. So unless you feel absolutely necessary to kind of go over those, then tonight, I think the board should consider either approval, approval with changes, denial or deferment of the amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions or kind of go over those highlights if, if you need as well. I do want to say also, present tonight is our planning board chairman, Mary Bright, who can kind of further speak to the planning's board work and proposals.
Does anyone have any questions?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to update you. As Adam mentioned, I'm the chairman of the Davie County Planning Board. Several of the Davie County Planning Board members are also here this evening. And at your request to revisit the ordinance, we have the, did the rewrite that's in front of you. We also provided in December of 2021 an executive summary because we learned more than we expected to learn as a result of that. And so I'm here tonight to give you an update on two points in the executive summary. The first is what we learned on decommissioning costs, and the second is what we learned about the LLC structure and the business structure of the solar facility owners. The executive summary statement that we put together, we still stand by that, and that's unanimous across the planning board, which is that further solar in Davie County is not beneficial and gives us substantial financial risk. Decommissioning costs, as an example, we expected we might get $2 million of a revenue stream from Ratliff and Junction Road. But, and, but the decommissioning costs using Duke Energy's numbers for the eight facilities we have in place, which total over 600 acres, comes to $9 million. We did finally, two weeks ago, get the total value of the two warranty guarantee bonds, and that's $140,000. So 2,140 doesn't even come close to offsetting the 9 million. What we would ask is that a risk benefit analysis be done by the county to make sure that we know exactly what that math is at end-of-life for solar. The second question really is solar ownership, and that's fairly questionable. As a matter of fact, we believe it's a facade. We don't even believe it's reality. Two of the eight that we have in place today have already issued articles of dissolution with the North Carolina Secretary of State, Crawford Road and Daniel Road. So we have no idea how they're going to be maintained, how it's going to be paid for, or who's going to own the end-of-life commissioning costs. Davie County has eight approved solar facilities. They've changed ownership over 50 times. Every single one of them has turned over at least one time. All eight of the eight approved solar facilities are limited liability corporate. All eight of the eight approved solar facilities are limited liability corporations, limited liability corps. Those are not the same as an S corp, a C corp, or corporation. They're not in business to make money. They've got that liability coverage just to protect their liability. So the company ownership, the real concern with the company ownership is that it creates a huge lack of confidence with respect to their motives and their long-term commitment to Davie County. The John Locke Foundation, and I brought copies for you also tonight, I'll hand these out, put together information from the North Carolina Department of Revenue in 2015. For those companies that received a tax credit as a result of this, over half of the top 86 companies who invested in the LLCs were financial institutions and insurance companies. Of the five decommissioned companies, of the five decommissioning contracts that we've viewed, we've been able to see the ownership only on three. The first three, Moxville, Daniel, and Toprak, were already in place before the county created an ordinance. So we had five left. We can only see contracts for three. Of the three, those three, the landowner is responsible for the decommissioning costs. For 50 acres, decommissioning costs using Duke Energy's numbers totals $575,000. Now, is the landowner really going to pony that money up, especially if it comes to fruition in less than the 20 or 30 years that it's expected? So our conclusion to you, and we respectfully just ask you to consider the financial impact to the county, but that tenuous ownership coupled with the exorbitant decommissioning costs gives substantial risk, financial risk, to the county, to the landowners, and to the taxpayers. So should you decide to approve more solar projects, we suggest the county commit, can complete a risk benefit analysis and define a plan by which we cover these costs. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. In terms of the risk benefit analysis, are, are you asking us to work on the current projects that are in place to kind of estimate the decommissioning cost and the, and the cost of the county? Are you, are you asking us to deal with those on a project by project basis as they come to us in the future?
Both. Good question. Thank you. Really both. I think we need to validate the 9 million. That's the number that Duke Energy has using the inflationary component that's been added to it. And that's 9 million because it's $115,000 per megawatt. We're just short of 80 megawatts across the county that's been installed on the 660 acres. But we think for any other project, should you decide to adopt the ordinance that's before you, we also recommend a risk benefit analysis done before anything's approved.
I think you, I agree with you 110% on that. I guess my question to you is this, very specific. Are you asking us to defer or continue with the moratorium until we do this prior to approving what you're bringing to us tonight?
Yeah, I think that obviously is your decision. We're a recommending board, but the planning board, the Davie County Planning Board feels very strongly that we have enough solar in Davie County. However, we also respect that this is your decision, not our decision.
Well, you are already approved the ordinance.
We have approved, yes, we have approved the ordinance that we are recommending to you. Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Did that answer your question, Mr. Jones?
Yes. I'll answer it myself.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I hear you, loud and clear.
Any other questions?
The information you got from Duke Energy on the decommissioning, is that, is that a published paper or where did you get that?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Renninger, could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. The, the cost to decommission a plant that you got from Duke Energy, is that, I know you got it from Duke Energy, but is that publicly available or?
It is. It is. I can get that for you if you'd like it.
Okay.
I will say at this point in time in the erratic economy that we're in, I don't know that spending money on that study at this very moment would be that profitable because things are changing daily. So I understand why you're asking, but I don't know that that would really have any staying power.
We weren't looking for a study. We were just looking for a financial risk benefit analysis. Finance organizations do that.
Yep. But you know, it's probably not going to hold water for very long is what I'm saying in this, with the way everything is right now. And you know, I don't know how long that that would stay true, you know?
I think the, the concern is that we don't know what's at risk with the two locations that have already filed articles of dissolution. But you have a copy in your package that shows Moxville, Daniel, and Toprak. And that's about 170, 180 acres that we already have filed articles of dissolution on for two of the facilities. And so what we are basically saying is, how are we going to deal with that? Do we know? And shouldn't we know? Because it'll either be the landowner, the solar developer, which we cannot track down, or the county, or a federal super fund for cleanup. And we don't know which.
All right, anybody have any other questions for Ms. Wright or Mr. Barr?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing, so I will ask Mr. Vogler to read us the rules of engagement, please.
Okay, the vice chair's analysis is a day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to chapter 160D of the general statutes of North Carolina, also chapter 155 Davie County Code of Ordinance. An amendment to the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan regarding solar energy generating facilities in code section 155, 125, 155, 130, 29, and 155.151. Has been duly, due notice has been given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication of notice of the public hearing and a newspaper general circulation in Davie County is required. The clerk of the board is attached to the affidavit showing publication of said, in said paper. I would ask to all who wish to come to comment at this public hearing, to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board and then comment on the proposal.
My name is Andy Backus. I live on Cornwallis Drive in the Putting Ridge neighborhood. I'm pleased to have been involved in studying the county's solar policy as a member of the Davie County Planning Board. As Maryam said, five of us are here tonight. I believe our proposed ordinance text accomplishes the goal of consistency, predictability, and transparency in our government, and I advocate for the commissioners' approval of it with the direction to add it to the Davie County Comprehensive Plan. Maryam just spoke about the multiple changes in ownership of the eight solar projects the commissioners have approved for the county, and she gave you the data on the decommissioning risk. I won't rehash that except to state that as a business person who routinely evaluates risk benefit analysis, there must at minimum be some decommissioning liability protections in our solar approval procedures to safeguard the county's citizens and taxpayers. I do want to use my time to update you on our own experience at Putting Ridge to provide a practical example of what's happening in our county and bring the data to life, if you will. As most of you know, my wife Amy served as president of the Putting Ridge Homeowners Association last year, and we opposed the Putting Ridge solar project. During development in the zoning application process, the original, original developer, Bird's Eye Energy, sold themselves with assurances that they would be a good neighbor and they would work with us on buffer zones and so forth. And to be fair, when they were involved, they did. But now, before the project is even built, I understand that the project is on its third owner. Repeated attempts, including today, to connect with anyone with knowledge or decision-making authority regarding the project have been unsuccessful. The point is, from a citizen's perspective, despite all the goodwill and promises during the rezoning application process, what is happening in practice, even just one year removed from zoning approval, is not matching up. The Putting Ridge Homeowners Association, who filled the room when the issue was on the agenda for the commissioners, today has no idea what is happening with the project. So that is just one example of what is happening in practice with these solar development ownership arrangements. Again, I am pleased to have been involved with Davie County Solution in the form of the proposed new solar ordinance, and I urge you to adopt it. Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Backus a quick question? What's the acreage of the, of the proposed project out there?
I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I think it's 75, 75?
50 acres.
50?
50.
50, okay.
50.
Any more questions? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else who wishes to come and comment, please come to the podium. And state your name for the board so that we've got that on the record.
My name is Nick Slodzik. We own a, my wife and I own a farm on Junction Road. We were in the middle of that fiasco a couple of years ago that started up, and I would like to just acknowledge the planning board has done a wonderful job of digging into some of the details associated with these, I guess, these Bernie Madoff kind of deals. This solar farm business, it's not a farm. It's an industrial wasteland. I did my best to make my piece of Davie County be a better place. If the commissioners, to me, don't institute a permanent moratorium on solar farms, you're doing a dis, a disservice to the existing residents of Davie County and any future people who want to come here and make it a fine place to live. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Herb Eckelen, Dr. Eckelen. I'm an emeritus professor of NC State Mechanical and Aerospace Engineering. I've been a proponent of solar energy for many years. In 1980, I orchestrated the design and construction of the NCSU Solar House. The whole Solar House was built for research, demonstration, and public education purposes. The house was open for 30 years. Thousands of North Carolinians went through the house and educated themselves on solar energy. The house today serves as a research lab for our graduate students. In 1987, because the house was located in Raleigh, I wanted to extend the solar information to the people of the state and founded the NC State, NC Solar Center. That would extend the benefits across the state. Now, solar energy systems take three forms. They can be used to space heat a house called passive solar. They can be used to heat water, and they can be used to protect and generate electricity. The one thing that these systems all have in common, they're all different, different technologies, but what they have in common is they are all dependent upon a backup. Now, we're here today to talk about solar farms. I've contacted by people from all over the country about this problem, county commissioners and public citizens. Solar electricity is very inefficient. It requires 75 times more land than a conventional power plant for, per megawatt hour. All solar developers are LLCs. We've heard that mentioned earlier today. That means that the solar developer and the investors cannot be held personally responsible for their business debts and liabilities. They're shielded. I don't know about you, but that bothers me, even as a solar proponent. Another unknown fact is solar developers sell their interest in the solar farms in three years. Why should you commit a county, your county, for 30 years with someone who's gone in three? What are you as county commissioners going to do when solar developer walks away from the solar farm without notice? What are you as county commissioners going to do when the solar developer sells his solar farm to someone who knows nothing about solar but is in the business only for tax credits? These are some things that you need to think about. Even as I, as a solar proponent, I'm concerned about these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Bonnie Grigsby. I represent a contingency across the county that stand with the planning board's unanimous conclusion Davie County has enough solar. I have two main points tonight. Thank you for being forward-thinking by updating our solar ordinance. And two, financial obligations cannot be recovered from solar developers after the first panel is in the ground. The business model of industrial solar, as you know, is energies generated, money's made, lasts about 25 years at best, and then the business is over. No more money, but now the real expense begins to restore the property to fertile farmland. This is obviously no small matter as our North Carolina General Assembly is required, has required the Department of Environmental Quality to study financial, solar financial obligation. It's a 51-page summary dated March of 2022. An example from the study, the cost to recycle a single solar panel is $25 to $30 per panel. That's expense, not profit. Their study only has data on our first four facilities. Half of our facilities, their number, 150,000 panels, are in the ground in Davie County. That's a total expense of four to four and a half million dollars for half our facilities to be recycling panels. That does not include land restoration and more. If our state legislators thought that financial assurance at decommissioning was worthy of study, I'd say that's a strong signal there's a problem that needs to be addressed, and you're addressing it. My second main point, financial obligations cannot be recovered from developers after construction. Solar developers have told us, you'll make money using salvage values at decommissioning. Thus Davie County does not need financial money to set aside. Currently, as you heard, we have two bonds for eight facilities. Because we have let developers tell us what we, what we needed, this new ordinance lets us tell them. On page 16 of this document regarding financial models, I quote, "Each facility is developed by a unique set of investors that form an LLC. The financial model and financing are established in the early stages of facility construction and would be difficult to change or revise to include financial assurance funding after construction is complete." So if solar developers are wrong, and we don't make money at decommissioning, and we didn't require a bond or a certified check to cover the upfront costs, the LLC is under no obligation. Since this is obvious to smart counties like ours, to, this is obvious, smart counties like ours will require stringent financial commitments before considering industrial solar. So in conclusion, knowing that our state is concerned with how decommissioning is going to be funded, knowing anything they put in place will take years to implement, knowing that our immediate, our needs are immediate, we are grateful that you are forward-thinking. You directed the planning board in a monumental task, then they developed an updated ordinance and updated solar comprehensive plan language, a fine document, not perfect, but a fine starting point and one that we advocate to put into place to start protecting our county. By passing these documents tonight, you will protect future generations from the costly mistakes of industrial solar development. Thank you. Can I answer any questions for you commissioners?
Do you want to have any questions for Dr. Grigsby?
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment at this public hearing? If so, come forward.
If so, come forward. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Discussion points or considerations you want to discuss here?
I would just like to point out something. I mean, I appreciate all the work that's been done, and I appreciate everything that's been said, but I also want to reiterate something I have said before, that the use of farmland for a solar farm is not the only terrible use of farmland in this county. So the next time that someone wants to cover up a large area of farmland with concrete and warehouses, I hope that you come and support that issue as well. And we always have approved these before based on landowners' rights. Well, that kind of takes the landowners' rights out of the equation with this particular idea. But, and also, I would love to see you come alongside Ms. Derringer and support her plea for us to have a leash law and allow her to have peaceful living at her house as well. I appreciate you coming, but I sure would like to see you come every time we have an issue like this.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. I have one that I would like to make. It always concerns me when we're taking rights away from our farmers, especially those that are getting older and no longer able to farm. By taking away these rights, we narrow what they can do with their land in order to be able to live out the rest of their life in comfort. We're getting to the point where the only thing that we're going to be allowing would be residential development or industrial development. And while industrial is, is a good thing, residential is expensive for the taxpayers of the county, because every time a house is built in this county, your taxes go up a little bit. We need to keep that in mind. And that's my biggest concern on this, is the rights of the farmers.
Any other comments or concerns?
I would just say that I would echo what Mr. Poindexter, Commissioner Poindexter's saying about the rights of the farm owners or farmers, but when I look at this globally, and we've taken a long time to look at this, and I absolutely appreciate everything the planning board has done, y'all did a great job. The long-term benefits of solar, I just don't see it for Davie County. And for the greater good, I just don't see how we need any more solar farms in Davie County at this point. If the science gets refined and it becomes a better proposition or more efficient, then we can revisit it. But right now, I just don't see it being viable beyond what we have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just say this. I appreciate the work that the planning board did. I, I think, I would like to see us as a county, in a unique way, work with our farmers, especially our long-term landowners, farmers, whoever they might be, to, to work through our legislators to, to do some levels of creative issues as it relates to taxes and property taxes on property that has been held, in some cases for generations. To allow these landowners the ability to stay on their property and not force them into, into a situation where they have to sell to developers, they have to sell to large solar entities. I think there are ways that, that we could do that. I think we've got to think outside the box, but I agree with Vice Chairman Renninger that I, I don't believe that the long-term issue of, of large solar farms is a benefit to any, to, to the citizens of Davie County. Now, I, you know, have we closed the public hearing? We have. I would make a motion to approve, but I would say this. I started to ask Ms. Wright and Mr. Barr the issue of the hundred acres versus seventy-five or fifty acres. I, I think, let's move with this. It's a good step, as everyone has said, but we may have to revisit this after a year or so, relook at things, but, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to, to approve the recommendation of the planning board.
I have a motion to approve the planning board's recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Four one passes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to our second public hearing, Motorsports Fund Grant Agreement. I'll call on Mr. Robin West. Mr. Robin West, excuse me.
Good evening. Earlier this year, the North Carolina Department of Commerce announced a motorsports grant fund that was made available through the Motorsports Relief Fund. This fund was established by the North Carolina General Assembly in the most recently passed state budget in the past fiscal year. This fund was aimed to offset the negative economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic to support safe reopening and aid planned expansions or upgrades that have been delayed by the pandemic. High Performance Holdings LLC, which is Farmington Dragway, made an application with assistance of Davie Economic Development Commission in February to Commerce for this grant. So to date, we have gotten two grants that were awarded to Davie County through Commerce. The first is for $485,000. The second is for $22,654. The additional amount was due to some additional amount of gate entries provided by Farmington Dragway. So we got the, the second grant for the smaller amount. So High Performance Holdings LLC will be the county subrecipient for this grant, and a separate contract is requested to be approved in your information tonight. We are allowed to withhold ten percent for grant administration. This would cover our expense for grant reporting. This is an extensive grant that requires monthly reporting. It's pretty extensive. Contract preparation review, as well as reviewing the company's costs for, for reimbursement. So this will be a reimbursement-based grant. So the company would spend the money, propose reimbursement amounts for the amount of their costs, we review those to make sure they're in compliance with the grants as required through North Carolina Commerce. This is actually a flow-through grant from the federal government, so we will review those and then reimburse the company if it was approved. So before you tonight, we have two grant agreements between Davie County and the North Carolina Department of Commerce, as well as a single agreement between the county and High Performance Holdings LLC. In conjunction with the agreement, we have to ensure that these grants get spent for the purpose for which they're intended and as a matter prescribed by statute, as well as making sure that all improvements comply with applicable laws and zoning requirements. So the total amount that we would be holding back for administration is a little over $50,000. But all of that information is before you and included in your, in your agenda packet tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
If I can, I just wanted to add that this is a non-conforming use under our zoning codes, the Farmington Dragway, meaning they cannot expand the use of the property. They're entitled to renovate and keep what's there up to standard, and that's what will be done with this grant. It will not be used to expand the Speedway.
We were sure to include in the grant agreement that we have between the county and High Performance Holdings, to include that language, that everything would be within, you know, zoning regulations.
And the money is expended on a per-project basis. In other words, they have to, they have to come to us with money that they have spent.
Absolutely, yes. And they have to follow, we got over the weekend a lot of guidance from the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office that works with Commerce for this, as far as, you know, the way they have to bid the job, spend the money, and that kind of thing, and we'll be sharing it with the company if we approve the contract. But we included that all in the agreement.
They actually can't spend money until we've approved that for expenditure and make sure the standards have been followed for the award of the contracts.
Yeah, that's it, unless you all had any more questions.
Anybody have any questions for? Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair has announced this today and now the public hearing on the Motorsports Fund Grant Agreement with the sub-grantee agreement with High Performance Holdings LLC in Davie County and also the two grants with North Carolina Department of Commerce. There's been UNO's given percent to the requirements, North Carolina General Statutes, Davie County Code, by way of publication of notice in the public, no, in a public newspaper of the public hearing with general circulation Davie County as required by law. The clerk to the board is attached in affidavit showing publication of this notice. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come, oh, okay, coming from the back, I'm sorry.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Buck Burkhart. I've been a small business owner here in Davie County for twenty years with High Performance Holdings. We have employed a lot of people out of Davie County. We've used the fire department, the EMS, and we are proud that North Carolina has recognized us as a necessary motorsports company in North Carolina. I can guarantee you personally, all funds are going to go for safety. We're going to redo the track as far as the asphalt, return lanes where potholes are and so forth. The administration costs are going to be minimal to the county. Both contracts are close to $200,000 to $270,000 each. So again, administration costs are going to be minimal. I think that Davie County will be able to put a lot of that money into their account after it's all said and done. So with that being said, I ask that you approve this grant. Thank you.
I apologize for not seeing you come forward to.
I was over the board.
Okay. Anyone else who wish to come forward, speak, come to the podium. Mr. Chair, now seeing no one come forward to the podium, I would turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of the public hearing, and then to turn the matter back over to the board for the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter at this time.
Okay. Board have any discussions or questions or concerns? All right, do I have, someone who wants to make a motion to approve or deny?
I would make that motion.
Do I have a motion to approve?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Five oh, it is approved. Thank you. Okay. All right, next we'll move to our consent agenda for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, you pulled item three.
I did. Yes, sir. I did. Have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. All right. So we'll go to old business, Farmington Meat Processing LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer until our September meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to defer to a September meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor to defer? Five oh, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, under the consent agenda, did we want to ask Mr. Paul Moore if he had anything to say about Recreation Month? Sorry.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Moore, you want to come up here and get in front of everybody?
How old time are you? You have thirty seconds.
I'll make this, I'll be short and be seated. Yes, this is, this is National Parks and Recreation Month for our National Association, and we ask all in our community that, to, to go out and explore the undiscovered assets within our park, within our community and recreation centers all across the county. And if you take pictures, share stories, be sure to hashtag that with, with "We Rise Up" for National Recreation Parks Month. We started off our July, July 2nd with our biggest event at our park yet. We had over 10,000 plus for our independent celebration. Got hairy there at the end with weather. I do want to thank and give kudos to our fire EMS, our fire marshal service, and my staff for quick communications, all within about fifteen or sixteen minutes. Was quite remarkable to go into emergency prep mode. Luckily, we didn't have to go green on all that, but to get contractors moved and, and safety protocols in place was quite remarkable. So thank you for our, our county staff, EMS, fire EMS, Sheriff's Department for all that they do, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Buck.
All right. We'll go back around. That will be it. New business. Is there any new business for us this evening? Seeing none. County manager report. Mr. Ruffin.
Okay, I only have one item, Mr. Chairman, and that comes actually from Commissioner Poindexter. Actually, I have two items, I'm sorry. August 23rd is former mayor Dr. Slate's 100th birthday. And so I just wanted the board to know we'll be honoring him that night with a resolution. Commissioner Poindexter has suggested that the board proclaim the 23rd as, as Dr. Slate Day. We'll, we'll get the official name correctly and everything, but that will be on your August 1st agenda. He's healthy, I understand, so we'll see if we can't have him here to recognize him that night. Ed handed me this before we met, but Robert Eugene Brown and wife Lisa Ann Brown have petitioned the Board of Commissioners in Davie County and the Board of Commissioners in the town of Moxville to enter into a mutual agreement to assign zoning jurisdiction over their property consisting of ninety-eight acres of land located in Davie County to the zoning jurisdiction of Davie County. It's currently divided between the town of Moxville and Davie County. I have a resolution, I'm not asking them to approve it, are we, Ed?
No, that'd have to be next month.
We just need a poll as to whether they're willing to do.
Just to be sure you're okay to assume the full zoning jurisdiction for this parcel of property that's coming from the town of Moxville is asking you to do that as well. So any objections? You need more information?
How much?
Yes.
How much is in the county? How much is in the town?
Looking to see. I know it's split. It's ninety-eight acres total. I don't think I see.
We can get more information on that prior to the August meeting.
Doesn't say.
Hank Van Hooy represents the petitioners, and I don't remember him saying how much is in the county and how much is in the town, other than the fact that he said the bulk of it's in the county.
Okay. We've got the notations in the registered deeds office, so we get that information for you. Just wanted you to know, Mr. Hury had no objections.
But given, and that's coming from the town, has anything been presented on this land for rezoning up to this point, or they're just thinking about it?
They have been polled, and my understanding is they're going to present it to their August meeting, in which case they will, are saying at this point in time that they're going to request that it be turned over to the county, that they will pass a resolution. to request that it be turned over to the county, that they will pass a resolution. Then we would pass a resolution, and then it'd have to have a zoning petition, and we'd have to go through the formal process of rezoning, anything, if there was, be anything rezoned.
It's not, we're told it's not supposedly a controversial request.
So the town of Moxville would have to make the formal, they would have to make a formal request to us after they pass the resolution?
Yes.
They, do they meet prior to?
They actually, they actually, I'm not sure how they're going to do that. They talked about a special meeting, they talked about putting it on the August meeting, which would be after our meeting, which means then it would be September. So it depends on what they do, on their timing.
And so you'll get us copies of this resolution at the appropriate time.
As well as the acreage, yes. We'll get that for you. Okay? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It'll be on our August 1st agenda. Okay?
Or September agenda, depending on when the town does theirs.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Ruffin. Next, I'll move to Commissioner's comments. Ladies first, Mr. Finney.
I'll be short and sweet. I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I hope you will come back again when we have other events going on, whether they are close to your home or not, that you'll come and participate in government and learn more about what we're doing, and just hope everyone continues to have a wonderful summer.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everyone for being here. You're the reason this is a great county to live in. God has blessed us in mighty and wonderful ways, but you guys are the manifestation of God's blessings, and I thank you each for being here. Real quickly, I want to say thank you to the North Carolina Legislature, Representative Howard, Senator Kravik, Senator Jarvis, for proposing a good budget. Thank the governor for today signing that budget, setting aside political differences. That budget represents a tremendous investment in Davie County as it relates to economic development and infrastructure. And so I just, I want to thank publicly those folks for really doing a great job for us in Raleigh. And again, thank each of you for being here.
Okay.
I too would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It is wonderful to look out and see a crowd in the seats, filling the seats. Hope you'll come back again next month, and the next month, and the next month. Also, I'd like to thank all our county employees. They don't get thanked enough at times for the wonderful jobs that they do, and also the emergency people in this county, the fire department, sheriff's department, the EMS. Would like to say thank you to all those, and hope to see you again next month.
Mr. Renninger.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here. It's good to see the room full. And again, I want to thank the planning board again for all their work on the solar ordinance. Again, it's not perfect, but it is a tremendous step, and I thank you for that. I hope everyone continues to enjoy the summer and come back next month. Thank you.
I'll praise the rain we got this past week, finally. It's been pretty brutal for farmers and agribusiness and people like me to work outside. But I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I too want to thank the planning board. I apologize, I had a nosebleed. It wasn't like I was trying to get away from everybody. I appreciate all the work they've done, and this is not easy. I really appreciate, again, all the hours and all their time. And again, this is, may not be perfect, but it's a work in progress, and we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to, we're trying to protect landowners' rights, but we're also trying to protect everyone else's rights, too. And again, we're all making hard decisions up here on this board, but I think, I think we're working the right, the right direction there. So with that, I'll close. Mr. Comment?
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing? Just one quick thing, as it relates to the budget. One of the things that we, we need to do in Davie County to, is, I think, really to honor those that, that farm. And there's a group here that's working on that. Bonita has worked closely with them, Richard, some others. But I think one of the things we need to do is, and I would like to see us as commissioners, work to take a first step toward this ag center. And that first step would be to, to help them find a way through Commissioner Trotzler, through the budget process at the state level, to try to find some money to begin stage one of that. And so I just, you know, if we can get that in the minutes, I'd like to see us talk, all of us begin to talk, to see how that would look while the state is being very generous. So we don't need to let that go. I think we need to maybe be more aggressive and push towards getting that started. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With that, I'll close. Commissioner Comments? Moving to a closed session. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of new and old public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against a public officer or employee. I have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor? We are in closed session. Thank you. Back in open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? We adjourn. Thank you.